I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 20th, 2017 Papillion City Council Meeting into order. Ms. Butler, would you please take the roll?
Florence, Mungard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please, we do have a quorum?
We do.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. I'd like to recognize Steve Gare, who's with us tonight. Steve is the mayor of West Des Moines, so thanks for joining us. We've actually used West Des Moines for examples on how to do planning the appropriate way, so keep doing what you're doing and we'll keep watching. Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Black. Despite Friday's storm, Papillion Day's activities continued as planned, with one exception, the duath lawn race was canceled. Gosh, I've got a frog in my throat. Ann Ames, Papillion Community Foundation Director, did an excellent job managing a stressful situation. City crews have been working continually since the storm on Friday. To date, Public Works and Parks Departments have worked over 600 hours on storm-related activities. The Police Department spent 32 hours of overtime to accommodate the storm management. And again, we anticipate some reimbursement of costs from state and federal disaster funding. Public Works staff began picking up tree limbs and branches today and will continue through next Tuesday, but no weekend pickup. And if you want more details, you can go to our city website. So I'm very proud of the manner and expedient response from all city employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, good.
Or just one last thing, just a quick reminder, you told me to make it quick. The next city council meeting would normally be July 4th. Because of the holiday, it will be the Wednesday, July 5th. Just a reminder, please put that on your calendars and we'll also send you a reminder. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Mr. Bellino, that was on, yours was on there, so it is approved. Thank you. Next is Item E1, Ordinance 1758, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to single-family residential medium-density R2 for the property legally described as a tax lot 15 located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 33 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located northeast of 108 Street and Shram Road, the applicant is Dynasty Homes LLC, the reserve at Shram Point. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents?
It's all right, we'll get that going. Mark Westergaard with ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. This is a small parcel of ground that's located on the north side of Shram Road, just to the east of 108 Street. It is commonly known as the Shram Parcel. It is proposed for all single-family development with 33 lots. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'll save the rest of the presentation or questions that you may have for the preliminary plat.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1775, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to limited industrial LI for the property legally described as attractive land located in the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 35 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the northwest corner of Highway 50 and Gold Coast Road, the applicant is Development Services Corp., Crossroads Commerce Park. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, which is Development Services Corporation, which is an R&amp;R company. And with me tonight is Tom Rupecht and Steve Gare of R&amp;R Realty from Des Moines. With your permission, I guess there's three items on the agenda. The first one that we're here on is the public hearing for the rezoning, but then in the next agenda item, we have the preliminary plat and, of course, the amendment to the comprehensive development plan. So I was hoping to maybe make the presentation on everything and then get into the next set of agenda items.
And we'll carry all these comments over to the next items as well.
Perfect. That's great. Thank you. So as I said, we have three approvals today. We have the preliminary plat, the change of zone from AG to LI, as well as the amendment to the comprehensive development plan with respect to the access to this particular site. Get the right side with the world here. So the proposed site is shown right here, Highway 50, Gold Coast Road. So it's the northwest corner of Highway 50 and Gold Coast Road. It is currently undeveloped. It contains about 76 acres. The north of the proposed development is zoned LI. The west is unplatted but also zoned LI. The east side is R4, but it's the proposed metro community college campus. And then, of course, the south is undeveloped and is currently zoned AG. So the proposed development calls for four buildable lots and three outlots. The outlots are for detention basins and green areas. The four lots will contain these four buildings. Again, rezoning from AG to LI. It is consistent with the master plan. The only change to the master plan is Sarpy County had a master plan that showed 146th, I'm sorry, 147th, 146th and 147th street coming through the proposed development. With the traffic study that we commissioned, it was shown that 146th Street that does come through, it was adequate to serve not only the property to the north, the proposed development, but also the property to the south. So we've got two terminus points here at these two locations at 145th and 147th with 146th Street being constructed as part of this proposed development. It is a phased, proposed phased development at this time, but again, it's really dependent in a large part on the demand for these particular buildings. It will start from Highway 50 and move west to 150th Street. The 146th Street will be constructed with the second phase or building number two coming online. And then also, we are dedicating 150th Street, the east half with this particular plat. The west half of 150th Street will be dedicated when, and at such time as the west side of 150th gets actually platted, because again, it's zoned LI but it's not platted. So these four buildings, the two buildings here closest to the east are 248,490 square feet, and the two buildings to the west are 297,099 square feet, so they're relatively large buildings. But they're only one-story in height, they're 40 feet in height, but they have a 32-foot clear space within the building. The total valuation of this proposed project is $55 million. We do intend to install Gold Coast Road. We've met with the county in phases as we develop these particular lots. And we are going to use Sanitary Improvement District to make these public improvements. We did have a neighborhood meeting some time ago prior to Planning Commission. We had one person that showed up that occupies a building to the north, and he was actually thrilled, thought it was a great project and was happy. I took one other phone call, and that guy was satisfied and didn't have any concern or problems with this development either. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Of course, I appreciate the recommendation from the Planning Department and also the Planning Commission, so it comes due with favorable recommendations from both of those bodies. So with that, happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Next, Item E3, Ordinance 1776, an ordinance to annex certain real estate to the city of Papillion, Nebraska, and to provide for an effective date thereof. City park expansion, Bellino 96, Pink Industrial 2 and Pink Industrial 2 replat 1. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E4, Ordinance 1777, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion. In accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 16901 and provide for an effective date. This is also a public hearing. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E5, Ordinance 1778, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to general commercial GC for the property legally described as tax lot B, lying within the west half of the southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located west of Town Center Parkway along Olson Drive, the applicant is Advantage Investments Properties LLC. Advantage Investments, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? Is the applicant here? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E6, Ordinance 1779, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to MU Mixed Use for the property legally described as track 1, a tract of land located in the west half of the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. And track 2, that part of the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located near the intersection of South 132nd Street and Lincoln Road, the applicant is Jerry Reimer, Prairie Queen LLC, Prairie Queen. This is a public hearing. Proponents? Mr. Reimers.
Jerry Reimer, Prairie Queen LLC, 4880 South 131st Street, Suite 3. So we are proposing to build a community from 132nd Street to what would used to be Cornhusker to Lincoln and then a few acres past that. We are striving to create a neighborhood that is actually configured with small multifamily buildings that would be similar in nature to the era when Dundee was built. Instead of building large complexes, build buildings that are fourplex, sixplex, threeplex. And in most of the cases, limiting them to two, two-and-a-half types stories so that we don't have a lot of public hallways and stuff, so they function more like an individual home. We have very much been trying to emphasize the design of the project. We have charged our design team with the challenge of creating a neighborhood that people would want to drive through. I would propose to you that not too many people would look at an apartment complex as a place they'd want to drive through, and I would propose that in most apartments, you don't even talk about designing the sidewalks, designing the streets and the medians. And so we're actually creating a neighborhood that would then have small buildings that would function as multifamily housing. There'd be various types from townhomes, one bedrooms, two bedroom units and three bedroom units. There'd be townhome type units. There'd be buildings that have the garages attached. We would be using an alley type system that would facilitate carriage house garages and an ability to enhance the streetscape, not having, you know, as many typical driveways entering and garage door faces and so forth, so you get a more beautiful facade on the buildings that we're seeing here. We've designed, sorry, we're getting a lot of glare here. We've designed the streets to have a level of parking on the streets, but designed where it nooks in. We've been conscious to limit the number of parking stalls before you'd have a bump out of landscaping again. If you notice the curb here and then the sidewalk, typically in suburban developments, you might see three feet. Again, we're modeling after like a Happy Hollow type neighborhood, where in the olden days, they would have, you know, eight feet of green space there. You could create a tree canopy. And so again, very much trying to emphasize our design and emphasize a smaller scale, more of a community neighborhood type of scale versus what I think many of us have gotten used to in kind of a complex, you know, apartment complex world. So I guess with that, I'd open it up to any questions or...
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Get on the right item here. I got out of order. Bear with me one second. I'll close the public hearing. Next is Item F1, Resolution R170100. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to revise the street system currently depicted in the Sarpy County Future Land Use Plan to match the proposed street alignments depicted on the preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 35 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the northwest corner of Highway 50 and Gold Coast Road, the applicant is Development Services Corp., Crossroads Commerce Park. Again, a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents? Mr. Jobin, and we will carry the other comments over.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an amendment to the comprehensive development plan primarily to eliminate the through streets of 145th and 147th, understanding, I guess, how do I get that back up here? Oh, there we go. The elimination of 145th and 147th streets going through the property, but maintaining the 146th street connection. We will have two roundabouts for people to turn around in the subdivision to the north. I should add that this is Class A warehousing and distribution space as far as these buildings, so they're very nice. It's a precast concrete building with quite a bit of glass, and it's something similar that R&amp;R has done in the Des Moines area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you again. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R170100? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Related item, Item F2, Resolution R170102, also a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 35 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located on the northwest corner of Highway 50 and Gold Coast Road, the applicant is Development Services Corp., Crossroads Commerce Park. Again, a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Recognize Mr. Jobin, and we'll also carry the other comments forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, again, here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this preliminary plat.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing to a motion to approve Resolution R170102. Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is Item F3, Resolution R170103, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as tax lot 15 located in the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 33 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located northeast of 108 Street and Shram Road, the applicant is Dynasty Homes LLC, the reserve at Shram Point. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents?
Mark Westergaard, 10909 Mill Valley Road with the ENA Consulting Group. I told you briefly about this project, 33 lots. Not a lot of imagination to figure out what's going to happen on this. Probably the biggest thing was to figure out whether the county and city Public Works Department would prefer one or two accesses onto Shram Road. We ended up with two. That middle street you see is a cul-de-sac street. By far, the biggest challenge on this was kind of getting the county and the city together and figuring out how the interlocal agreement for Shram Road would be handled and through a combination of the city allowing us to use our ACIP fees that we pay for this development to be used for, applied to Shram Road, and also the county requiring some payments that are fairly upfront, but then allowing as valuation increases for some payments to be made down the line. We were able to work that out. So with that, happy to answer any questions about the project that you might have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R170103? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item F4, Resolution R170107, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as tax lot B lying in the west half of the southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located west of Town Center Parkway along Olson Drive, the applicant is Advantage Investments Properties LLC, Advantage Investments. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? Is the applicant here? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, I guess I'm just wondering, without the applicant being here, what's being proposed? Is, do we have an idea what they're looking at putting in at this location?
Mr. Stube, I mean, Mr. Sturzma.
So I don't have an image to put on the screen, but it's the former railroad right-of-way, which is located just west of Shadow Lake Town Center and south of Highway 370. My understanding is that the applicant is getting the property platted and zoned so that they can then market the property for sale. So at this point, it's speculative as to what will end up being developed there. But, you know, the other thing that they're doing is they're plating the right-of-way for the street that already exists, so there's a benefit to us as well.
So general commercial provides for what? Because it's a pretty narrow lot, assuming there's a lot of restrictions on that just because of the size.
Yeah, the proposed zoning is general commercial, which is consistent with the adjacent property to the west. General commercial is our highest level of commercial zoning, so it would allow for an assortment of commercial uses, but as you mentioned, it's a very narrow property and so they're fairly restricted on what can go there, just simply based on the geometry of the site and the size of the site.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R170107? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item F5, Resolution R170111, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as track 1, a tract of land located in the west half of the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. And track 2, that part of the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Generally located near the intersection of South 132nd Street and Lincoln Road, the applicant is Jerry Reimer, Prairie Queen LLC, Prairie Queen. Open the public hearing. Proponents? And I will carry the previous comments over as well.
Jerry Reimer, Prairie Queen LLC, 4880 South 131st Street. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Do we have, Mr. Stube, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Lots of questions, so...
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to wait till we have the motion? Council discussion?
Either way.
We'll do it in a second. Do we have any other proponents? Stay up there. Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolutions R170111?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Ingberg. Mr. Stube.
I guess I'm not going to put you on the spot from the standpoint of a lot of questions, Jerry, but can you just kind of go through a little bit of what you're proposing out here? I see a lot of a muse E and a muse A and tree houses and carriage houses. Kind of give us an idea of what you're proposing out there.
So fundamentally, we are trying to create a neighborhood. And neighborhoods typically grow organically. Wouldn't have the same architect, you know, building all, you know, 200 houses in the neighborhood. So we've actually engaged two different architects. We're giving them a level of architectural discretion to create different types of buildings. So muse is actually a type, a European type, where you create a walkway between buildings, and so it's almost, you know, it's kind of pedestrian feel. In Europe, they'd actually be able to draw, drive small cars down them in that sense, and this, we wouldn't do it in that way. We're just using it as an architectural feature to create connectivity for the neighborhood, assuming that people are going to be walking the sidewalks, want to cut through, see the architecture, go down to the lake. The tree houses would be probably one of the last things, you know. The architect was very intrigued by the trees that sit in the middle of the site, and he got, you know, excited, and we could build little tree house type units or something. And so I extended him some license there. It won't be the first project we'll start with. We're very much, again, trying to create, you know, a feel of a neighborhood. My goal here is that we, that people don't even believe that this is an apartment community, that they drive through and feel that this is a neighborhood. This is a home in fair acres that I've always liked. And as an example of this home, I'm like, you know, it's probably 10,000 square feet. And could we create a place like that where here's a three-bedroom unit that's 1,500 square feet and a family lives? You know, could this be a one-bedroom unit? Could this be a one-bedroom unit? It's not uncommon in some of the older neighborhoods to use the attic or, you know, like the loft and get the rooms up there. So, you know, as I looked at this type of building, I'm like, wow, that could be a sixplex. So we've actually designed a building that very much mimics this home. So the idea might be if your mother lived there, it's like, wow, you know, look at that beautiful home she lives in and be at your discretion and share it while she lives there with six other residents or something along those lines. The other thing by doing this, if, you know, I examine a home like this, there is a door here, there's a door here, there'd be a door around the corner here where, depending on how the home is functioning, you know, mom comes home, you go into the garage, the kids come home, they go through the closet, or the kitchen back, for example, a guest might come to this front door. As we build traditional apartments, we end up with these one-hour hall corridors that then go to a two-hour stair corridor, and we bring all this traffic out one point on a building. And then the residents generally want to be really close to their cars. So then we put a C aparting near those doors. This is an example of a traditional complex that we built on a lake in West Omaha. And, you know, again, as I looked at this, and this was the first time we built a large complex, we had done a number of units in the midtown area, there's fourplexes and sixplexes, and there were certain things I enjoyed about this larger project, but as I, you know, put myself in the position of livability and how the unit functions on a day-to-day basis, I really thought that our buildings down in Midtown that are the village had done offer some very special features that in some ways have been mass-produced out of buildings today. And so we have, you know, very consciously went and created buildings then that would put those features back in and create this neighborhood type of feel. In doing so, we've diversified the parking by diversifying where the doors are. If we have a door in the back and a door in the front, a door in the side, we can start to spread the parking around, so then we don't get this concentration of cars, so it doesn't look like a parking lot, and again, it looks more like a neighborhood type setting. And anyway, I think we've worked diligently with the city and really worked on design. And I think we have a design, my charge to our team and my goal was that we could win a national award and that people would come to Papillion and say, "We didn't think that way of developing apartments was possible, but we did it."
Talk to me a little bit about the phasing, and then the other thing is, there's not a whole lot of commercial retail type out there, and how does that come into play from the standpoint of you putting in more residential when you don't have those types of other amenities that might need to be available for that type of...
Yeah, I mean, we fundamentally believe that the lake is and the park is a strong amenity. There's a lot of traffic, as you all know, out there. The neighborhood to the east, the north shore, very fast populated neighborhood. I think people seek to live in Papillion. The schools are nearby. With that said, these buildings, you know, again, I think one of our largest buildings here that we start with is an eight-unit building. So we're going to start in the Phase 1 with approximately 100 units, but we'll be testing almost every unit type and the different types of buildings. So we'll be building seven in a row homes. They'd have three-bedroom units. We'd be testing a one-bedroom unit, we'd be testing two-bedroom units, and our architect has laid out the plot and land in a way that we can start to interchange if the market is signaling it likes the three-bedrooms better or the two-bedrooms or something. By starting with a hundred units in these smaller buildings, we can actually choose to scale up faster if the market is there, or to, you know, ramp up more slowly. If we're building a traditional building that might be as many as thirty-six units, every time you start one, you start thirty-six. You get feedback, well, you adjust thirty-six units later. In this scenario, where we can start with this four-plex and this eight-plex and so forth, we'll be able to start to get feedback and incorporate that, and we could scale up if the economy and absorption is strong, and we could, you know, scale more slowly if the absorption is not there. So we feel that this product actually allows us to go test the market. You know, it's one of these things, we were in midtown, and we built units that were way more expensive than nobody, you know, thought that could be done in that type of neighborhood. And so, you know, we always asked ourselves there, was the neighborhood the issue, or was the product? And we built a nice product, and the neighborhood, you know, was there, and it came very nice. So we believe that if we build a product here that people do want to live in the city of Papillion, they do want to be around that lake. If you look at the infrastructure of Highway three seventy, proximity to I eighty, you know, Omaha and Papillion's aren't hurt to use their car. So we really think that you can get to most anywhere from this location in approximately twenty minutes. They can really be back downtown, they could be really anywhere. And so we're going to take our chances with Papillion and really down on your success.
Mr. Stube, the phasing, we've also worked very closely on the phasing as well, so his phasing plan meets the road plan, so we understand then as the phasing how the road develops, and we've had some very specific conversations on that. And the mixed-use does incorp, I mean, the subdivision agreement does anticipate a mixed-use component. So at one hundred and thirty-second and Lincoln, there'd be a little neighborhood of commercial services as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Ingberg.
Jerry, I find this really intriguing. I'm glad you're going to try it here, because I think it's really a nice design. But I knew what Amuse were, and I knew everything else there, but I have to ask you, what are the two podium buildings? What are their function?
Yeah, so, let me just put this up so people. So the podium building implies underground parking. This particular area right here sits high. It's as close to some of the industrial as you feel. Interestingly enough, while we have the industrial right here, the grade from one hundred and thirty-second is going to drop nearly thirty to fifty feet, depending where you're at. And we're positioning things towards the lake. The way the grade sits right here, you're really up there, flat on the hill, so if we put some parking underneath, we could create some additional density, and perhaps, you know, these units might end up being, you know, more cost-effective for the resident. It's something that we would look at at the end. This particular one, while it's representing the same type of building, we've actually, we, as the grading plans have been built and some data has come back, we actually end up being a little short on dirt on the site, and so in some ways, this building is a placeholder right now. We probably need a building that has some function of underground parking associated with it to offset the dirt shortage and to deal with the grade. From a phasing perspective, I consider this much later, either one of these. Again, these are actually ninety-unit buildings, so I wouldn't want to do them until I was highly competent in the marketplace, and so one, I will propose as a little bit of a placeholder.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Thank you again. Item F six, ordinance seventeen sixty-two, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to R two, single-family residential medium density for the property legally described as attractive land being all of tax lots one, two A, two B, three A, four and five. Said tax lots located in part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter, part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, part of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter, part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, all located in section twenty-eight. Together with all of tax lot six, said tax lot located in part of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, and part of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter in section twenty-one, all located in township fourteen north, range twelve east of the six PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at Whitmus Drive north of Lincoln Road, the applicant is Woodland Homes Granite Lake. Is there a motion to approve ordinance seventeen sixty-two? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F seven, Resolution R seventeen zero one zero eight, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land. Being all of tax lots four and five and part of tax lot three, said tax lots located in part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter, part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, part of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter, part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, all located in section twenty-eight, township fourteen north, range twelve east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. Again, generally located at Whitmus Drive north of Lincoln, the applicant is Woodland Homes Inc., Granite Lake. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one zero eight? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Related item, resolution, item F eight, Resolution R seventeen zero one zero nine, a resolution to approve the Granite Lake subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one zero nine? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Also related, F nine, Resolution R seventeen zero one one zero, a resolution to approve the sewer and water connection agreement for SID three seventeen Granite Lake. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one one zero? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F eleven, Resolution R seventeen zero one one eight, a resolution to approve an application for American Legion Post thirty-two, two-thirty West Lincoln Street to relocate the outdoor area permissible by their Class C liquor license. Staff is requesting a seventy-five percent approval in order to waive a requirement set forth in Papillion City Code eighty-one dash four B two regarding the origin of the addresses for notification within three-hundred-foot radius. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one one eight? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. Five, I choose to vote yes.
Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. I don't believe any committees met. Any comments from the floor?
Public safety.
Oh, public safety did meet. Do we have a report?
Yeah, Public Safety Committee met tonight to discuss the bids that came in on the contract for construction, demolition and construction of the pedestrian bridge on one Washington Street. We only received one bid, and it was approximately six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars over the engineer's estimate. So staff had presented to the Public Safety Committee a number of alternatives, changing the plans to get some financial reduction in what the bid would be. We went through several of them, and the committee has recommended four hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred dollars in reductions in the proposed bid, changes in the design, et cetera, that would reduce the bid by about four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That left us about a hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars over the engineer's estimate, roughly two hundred thousand dollars more than the engineer's So we have recommended that the contract be amended in that degree, leaving us about two hundred thousand over what we expected to spend. I will tell you that one component of that, well, there's roughly six items that we changed, power, lighting, power, you know, lighting changes, mesh on the railings, railing changes, et cetera. One thing we recommend not changing was an elimination of the stairways. The plan that was bid has both the ramps, the ADA compliant ramps, and the stairways at both sides of the bridge. Eliminating those stairways would give us savings of another approximately seventy-three thousand dollars. The committee recommends no, we leave those in there, and go ahead and spend that seventy-three thousand dollars. Long and short of it is, July eighteen, then a contract award will come before the city council, and that contract amount will be approximately a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars over the engineer's estimate. We, the staff has informed us that the, there is enough in the projected interlocal agreement with the school district to cover this additional amount, so our financing plan does not change. If you have questions about the details as to what the committee is recommending being changed in the contract, please contact staff.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments from the floor? Yes, sir. And if you'd state your name for the record.
Tom Foral, five oh two Fleetwood Drive. I applaud all the development we have going to the west of our city. I love it. Prairie Queen, if I'm not mistaken, is annexed, and I love that development. I just ask that you, as the council, don't forget your neighbors to the east, your good neighbors to the east. We would love to be part of your city. Some of us have lived there for twenty-six years, I eighteen years. I would love to be able to enjoy the same benefits that you all get, not having to pay to use the library and, you know, the water rates. I just would ask you all, don't forget about us to the east. We've been here a long time.
Very fair comment, and I want to be careful we don't get too much conversation going because it's not an agenda item, but we are, we do evaluate them every single year to see if they're ready. We have been meeting, we started about three years ago, meeting with some of the SID boards to educate them on what they can do to help accelerate the annexation, and some of them to the east actually weren't contiguous to the city, but now with some of those commercial developments have occurred, that's created that contingency, I mean, that continuous part. So we're looking at it always, and hopefully it'll be sooner than later. Thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments from the floor? Any council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Mr. Mungard and I attended Government Affairs Meeting with the Chamber, had a very successful Papillion Days. Thank you, everybody, for that. There were literally times we were wondering if we would be canceling items, and every item was under review. And as Ms. Myers mentioned, the only thing that was canceled was the Duathlon, and I think that says a lot about the city staff and the, and the foundation and the civic organizations that pulled off Papillion Days. Told somebody, how many times do you do a major event that takes every one of your resources and choose to do a disaster at the same time that takes every one of your resources and pull them both off? Really impressed with our staff. Can't say enough thanks to them. Also, we've had several ribbon cuttings, the historical society, the Veridian Credit Union, so we've got a lot going on with the Chamber. Ms. Myers and I, Chief Bowes, Chief Lyons, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Lemming have all attended several emergency management meetings with Sarpy County. We put, unified command was put in place, so every jurisdiction in the county came together for emergency management meetings. City Papillion did formally declare an emergency. Sarpy County has formally declared emergency yesterday, and the governor did declare a state emergency today. So that should maybe open up some assistance from NEMA from a state level, and that emergency management plan and all of us together will work at the federal level to see if the president will declare an emergency or well, and that might open up some FEMA money. So that, all the extra costs we're incurring, there may be some assistance with that, and we're planning as if that will be there. We also, and related to recovery, we are doing curbside pickup, if you're getting that question. And curbside pickup means that it's trees only, not other storm debris. It needs to be six foot in length, and it needs to be at the curb. We cannot go into private property. Some of those are to stay with those FEMA and NEMA requirements for reimbursement. So if you're getting that question, trees only, six foot and less, at the curb side, we will not go into private property. We have opened the city dump site. Any storm debris can be brought there, so it is more than trees. It could be the furniture that was destroyed, it could be roofing, it could be other items, and that will be open. We've publicized the hours, and I believe it's through Monday, that will be open, and the hours vary a little bit depending on day, but the city has put that out. We do ask that people not bring non-storm debris there. Don't bring the old couch or the bricks from the unfinished project. It's not a cleanup day, a general cleanup day. It is specific to the storm. Want to give a real public thanks to OPPD. If you had not heard, they did say this was their fourth worst storm in forty years. So the fourth worst storm in forty years, and almost the high intensity of that was concentrated in Papillion's jurisdiction. Shadow Lake just came online last night, and the water plant just came online yesterday as well. So can't say enough about OPPD and what they did, and also want to publicly thank the city of La Vista. They're donating some public works resources to help with the curbside pickup, and they're helping not just the city, but they're also helping the county, and the county's going through the SIDs with the curbside pickup as well, so it's the whole jurisdiction. So any other council comments? If you have questions on the recovery, let Ms. Myers or I know, but the emergency is still in place until we get all the cleanup, and we're tracking the hours, and so we are still in the state of emergency. But I think power should be on. If you get any complaints from anybody that their power is not on, it's probably a house-level issue, encourage them to re-report that to OPPD. Don't assume that OPPD knows about that. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. We have a closed session. I didn't turn the page. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Yeah. Is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss land negotiations? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
I will state for the record, the purpose of the closed session is only to discuss land negotiations. The closed session will include the city council, city administrator, city attorney, city clerk, city engineer, planning director, and mayor.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Mungard. Please vote.
Five yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned.